I'd like to call this meeting of the June 9th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of a former selectman, Joseph Shannon. Joe was a town meeting member from Precinct 2 from 1967 to 1972. He served on the Board of Selectmen from 1972 to 1984. He was a town meeting member from Precinct 5 from 1984 to 1990. He served on the Planning Board from 1990 to 1995. He again served as a town meeting member on Precinct 5 from 1995 to 2004. And of course, mixed in there, his service on many other boards and committees was truly appreciated. So I'd like to ask you all to join me in a moment of silence for Joseph Shannon, former Board of Selectmen member. And I'll just add that our thoughts and prayers are with his family. Under public comment, we have Ellen Gabry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to say a few words about the recount. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Denise Brotherton and Danielle Carpenter on their win at the May 20th election, which was confirmed by the recount, which was held last Thursday, June 5th. The recount took about three and a half hours. This went smoothly and quickly. You may be wondering why it was televised with no audio. The recount is considered an election because ballots are being counted, and state law does not allow audio recording at an election, video only. Despite the complaints concerning the election and handling of ballots, the total number of ballots hand-counted during the recount matched the book totals of all voters that voted on Election Day. The ballots were loaded into boxes that were locked and sealed at the end of the election. Then those ballots were stored in the vault until the recount. The books were tallied at the end of the voting on Election Night, and the barcodes were scanned into the state system the next day. So there is a list of voters who voted in this election, which becomes a complete voter history list for that election and is a public record. This election has been certified to the Secretary of the Commonwealth. All election laws and regulations were followed for both the election and the recount. Three candidates gained a vote each, which is typical of recounts when using these AccuVote machines. I would very much like to thank the registrars of voters, Michael McNamara Chair, Brent Anderson, and Joe Martin, Town Council Robert Henigan, the total tally clerk, Worcester City Clerk, David Rushford, vote recorders, Northborough Town Clerk Andrew Dowd, Oxford Town Clerk Laurie Kelly, retired town clerks from Grafton Maureen Clark and Westborough Nancy Yendriga. Auburn residents who were ballot readers were Shirley Hill, Kathy Legacy, Jane June, and Jean Collins. The runners were Sharon Lindsey, election warden Sue Strozina, and Assistant Town Clerk Deborah Grimo. I appreciate the time and effort that these workers put into making this an orderly and efficiently done recount. Thank you.
Thank you for the information. We have no public hearings or presentations. There are no communications under Board of Selectmen general items. The first item are interviews. As members are aware, we are the appointing authority for the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Finance Committee. We will be holding interviews tonight for, actually, an interview tonight for a member who, for a resident who is seeking a position on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And all other applicants either have been invited in tonight or will be invited in to our next meeting. We will not make any appointments until we've held all of the interviews. So having said that, in your packet, you have information on Michael Maron. Mr. Maron, if you'd like to come up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we have your application and your resume in our packet, but if you'd like to just give your name for the record and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you have an interest in the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Sure. My name is Michael Maron. I live at 25 Bancroft Street in Auburn. I've been a resident for about eight years. My wife's been a resident all of her life. The Zoning Board of Appeals is of interest to me for a variety of reasons. I have an interest in property. I own a few pieces of property, and the management of property is of an interest to me. It likens the industry that I'm in. So I'm in the pharmaceutical industry. I'm not on the research, I'm on the research side of the house, and I've done, had the pleasure of managing a team in oncology research for many years. So we're governed by a set of code of federal regulations. I liken that to the bylaws in many ways. And so what I do professionally speaks to walking within a certain set of guidelines or laws. Beyond that, the guidelines are something that you would want a reasonable accommodation to take a look at, to have open discussion, to make sure that within those laws you can operate effectively. I see a lot of parallels between what I do professionally and the ZBA. And I, quite frankly, I mean, I've, throughout my residency here in Auburn, I've become more and more interested in some of the activities in town, some of the boards I've watched and seen some of the inner workings. And succinctly, this is a good way to teach my kids how to get involved, and it's one of the driving forces of trying to stay active within the town. And so it's a good way for me to essentially get involved in the ZBA. It's a personal interest of mine for property management, and so there are a lot of reasons why. I think this would be a good fit for me.
Thank you. Do members have questions? Mr. Holstrom, if you want to start.
Well, you're welcome. Have you got any background in zoning board? What brings you forward to your, I understand you have an interest in bringing your kids forward and showing them how to become active or not. Can you maintain your objectivity in the board meetings?
Yes, directly. But I don't have a direct background, and I've never served on a board before. But I've been extremely active in the properties that I manage and own. I've gone before ZBAs in other municipalities for a couple of different reasons. So I understand that side of the table to some degree. Certainly not an expert, but I was successful in negotiating a special permit at one time for a multifamily that I own. I understand the need for the conversation. And so what I feel is though it's important for business as well as residents to have an opportunity as a homeowner, as a property owner, as a business owner, to have that conversation, to explore options within the law. Because I think that what's really important is, as a property owner, and this is personal, but what's really important for me is to empower a property owner, to give them a sense of, you know, managing it correctly, give them a sense of ownership of what they need to do within the law. But when, there's a certain rigidity at times, and there's a reason for that. And so I know this overextends your question, but when I think of the times that I've gone before a ZBA and my goals of working out a common ground solution, it's not to skirt or lay blame or criticize the way the laws are written, because they're certainly purposeful. You know, the language means something, and there's a reason why they were developed in that way. But what I feel strongly is that, you know, many folks in control of their own property want to see a partnership with the regulatory authority. They want to see opportunities to take a look at solutions within the guidelines of the law. And I think that that, in particular, the ZBA, has an extremely strong function, a responsibility to really hear those discussions. A reasonable accommodation is a discussion that I think is important for that board to have, and I feel strongly that I can bring that.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else? Mrs. Brotherton.
Welcome, Mr. Maron. With all the work that you do, will meetings be a conflict? Will you be able, you know, does your schedule allow for meetings?
That's a great question. So, no, won't be a conflict, because I understand the ZBA meets once a month. And so I can certainly accommodate once a month. I operate primarily out of a home office when I'm not traveling on business. But at my current position, I have a lot of flexibility within my travel schedule, and so that I can pre-plan a great deal. I don't foresee one meeting a month an issue at all.
Thank you.
Did you have anything, Mr. Carpenter?
Just a quick question. Will you be available for training? Training typically takes place in the evenings, sometimes on the weekends. Is that going to be a conflict for you?
No, and thanks for asking that, because I wasn't sure at some point if I'll have an opportunity to ask a couple of questions. And training and preparation was one of them that I had for a new potential, through my candidacy, a potential member. So I would look forward to that. I would expect, and in my writing of my candidacy and putting the application forward, one of my concerns was that for a new member, that would be naive to the board, what would be available for training? So no, I would welcome that.
How much time will you be able to devote per week? This is a pretty important board. There is a lot of research. There are occasionally site visits, or probably more than occasionally site visits that need to be taken. How much time do you think during the week you'd be able to commit, or you think we should reasonably expect you to commit to the board, to this board work?
I don't want to answer viscerally by saying it depends, but for my, for my, for my wanting to essentially get involved and serve, as much time as it takes. I would not want to weigh in on a scenario that I hadn't visited the site. I think that's just a critical piece. So that's something that I, yeah, I would, I would make that kind of part of my routine. I couldn't imagine weighing in on something where I hadn't actually seen it, understanding property the way I do. But, you know, the self-study is something that I'm not adverse to. I would want to make sure that I was prepared. And then, again, through my candidacy, if I, if I had the opportunity to serve, you know, there would be kind of a double-down approach, where I would need to do, you know, more than the guy that's sitting there on the board routinely, because I need to learn the bylaws. I need to learn some of the mechanics of the meeting. Watching it and participating and actually being a voting member, very different things.
Thank you.
So I just want to ask you a couple of questions. As you're probably aware, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a regulatory board. Any of the decisions that they make can potentially be appealed to the courts. Do you have any concerns, first of all, of having any decision that you would participate in as a board member being appealed to the courts?
No.
Okay. And do you think because this, just for a follow-up on that question, because these decisions are potentially appealed to the courts, do you have any concerns with the way you would vote if you didn't have enough information?
My visceral reaction is no. I don't have any concerns about the way I would vote, you know, with the looming effect of litigation, potential litigation. I would liken it to what I do in the pharmaceutical industry. So I head up a team that is on the constant risk threshold of litigation regarding patient safety. And so what I mean by that is it's not a scary place to work by any means, but the level of importance is placed on what we do and how we do it every day. And so even though it's paperwork, and I'm far from the research unfortunately these days, I'm much more of a manager, but having the control over writing policy and executing policy and making sure that it's carried out, understand the level of importance, quite frankly, of operating in that kind of environment and knowing that the decisions you make carry that kind of weight. So it's not, and I know, Ms. Carpenter, you had mentioned, I mean, how important that board was. I mean, when you're making property decisions, not only just for the litigation factor, but you're making property decisions of folks that have invested a tremendous amount of money and value and worth. And I can tell you a couple of the properties that I own and manage are family properties, and so there's also an emotional connection to some of the properties that I have to manage them correctly. I understand that that's where I go with empowerment, where it's an important decision to make, to allow someone to step outside of what the laws might be and give a variance, provide special permits. And so I think that conversation of objectivity is critical, to make sure that it's a specific circumstance. I would never look to go into a discussion with a predetermined decision, even if I thought I already had all the facts and had visited the site, because it's really that objective discussion of goals and the decision that needs to be made by the board that I would respect. I wouldn't, but I know that that comes full circle, but coming back to your primary question, I've operated in an environment where litigation is a possibility. It's not a concern of mine. It's an estimated risk factor of making sure you make the right decisions.
And I'd just like to make any applicant aware that, you know, that their name could be, could be attached to legal action taken by someone. So, you know, that is concerning to some people, so I'm glad to hear that, that you have no concerns. Do board members have any other questions? So first, I want to thank you for coming in. And Mr. Simonian couldn't make tonight's meeting. I didn't have a discussion with him on your application, but you're welcome to come back to our next meeting and just to answer any questions he may have. We won't go through the entire process again, but if he has any specific questions, we'll ask you to come up first. And I can, I can ask him certainly if he feels that he wants to ask you any questions. And if he does, you're welcome to come back, just for his questions.
I'm happy to come back and entertain any questions he might have.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So as I said, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals and Finance Committee, and I expect to have the remainder of the applicants in at our next meeting for interviews. And I also will point out that Mr. Coleman, who's the current Chair of the ZBA, submitted a letter that he is not interested in being reappointed. So this board will have two full appointments to make, and I believe one alternate position at the time.
One quick question. How many applications have been received for these positions?
I'm not positive. We may have an additional, is Sharon gone? I think we may have an additional five for Zoning Board of Appeals and Finance.
Okay.
I believe, just the incumbent members. So. The next item is Board of Selectmen Goals, and in your packet, we have the goals that were voted on at our March 31 meeting. We do have a new member, number one, so Dan, I wanted you to be aware of the goals. And, you know, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I would like to see selectmen, you know, each kind of split up these goals, someone to undertake the license applications. We had also said we wanted to enhance access to the Board of Selectmen. We were going to do a schedule with office hours on a rotating business. It was recommended that we do office hours here, at the library, and at the senior center, so that we're accessible to a wide range of residents out there. And getting information to the town manager for Board of Selectmen updates for the newsletter. And the final one would be, continue to work on policies of the Board of Selectmen, develop policies, and update existing policies. Right now, Mrs. Brotherton and I serve as a subcommittee, and would be happy to continue doing that unless there's another member who would like to do it as well, I'd be happy to step aside. So having said that, does any, do any members have any thoughts on the license applications, the office hours, or the newsletter?
I did bring up the suggestion of having the license updates, the applications for licensing to update them, and I'd like to work on that project.
Okay. So it would be best to work with Patsy on those. She handles all the licensing through the office.
That would be great. I can do that.
And certainly, I think-
I'll be in touch with her.
What we need to do is at least make sure all of the applications have the town seal on it, as well as adequate contact information and everything else that needs to be on there. So I know we all said we would participate in the office hours on a rotating basis. Mondays work for people as a rule. I mean, I think if, even if we set a schedule, we can, we can be flexible. We can possibly hold office hours, say, from 5:30 to 6:30 if they were off-site. That would still give whoever was doing it time to get up here.
I have a little difficult time with Monday, Monday nights, beginning the start of the week, so.
Okay.
But that's just me. I will work with that schedule and do what we can, whatever has to happen.
So I know there are a lot of other meetings on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Does Thursday work for anyone?
Thursday?
Because we could do it in a rotating basis, too. We could do a Monday, a Thursday, a Monday, a Thursday.
It's very hard for me with my schedule. It's up and down, so I mean, whatever works for the majority of the board, that's, that's fine. I know Steve has office hours. I'd be interested to see what response he's gotten, because I did go to training this past Saturday with the Mass Selectmen's Association, and they were basically not exactly high on office hours, thinking that it's an underutilized, you know, service, and it's more important for selectmen to be out in the community so that people can see them and talk to them when they're most comfortable. So if we do decide to start this as a goal, I would ask that we do it on a trial basis and see what kind of response we get, because I think having us in an office, using up town resources, if people aren't feeling comfortable or just not utilizing the service, I don't see the point in having that service.
Well, it's, it was-
Or perhaps even, say, by appointment. Make it so that people could set an appointment, and then we could set something up.
So regarding the resources, so it would be in a town building that's open. We wouldn't need someone to come open a building and have an additional cost for opening a building for us. It would be either when the senior center's open, the library's open, or this building is open. So anyway, we can finish the discussion on these, and I'll try to come up with a schedule for the next meeting. Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd be more than willing to work on a newsletter for the town manager of keeping the residents-
Okay. It's, it's a quarterly newsletter, and the town manager can let you know when she needs the information by, and it would just be summarizing what we've done in the previous quarter to go into that. Thank you.
That'd be great. I'll get you the next newsletter, if I can, is July 1st.
Oh, no pressure. July 1st.
So I don't know if you want to do that one, or we can wait until the following one, but if you can.
And we can talk, we can just put something together, new member thanking old members, et cetera, so. Okay, good. There are no gift acceptance. There are no proclamations. Under Members Directing Town Employees Per the Town Charter, just wanted to read a couple things from the charter, because I've been approached by a couple of town employees. Under the new charter, on Section 4.02, the Administration, "All town agencies shall be under the direction and supervise, supervision of elected or appointed officials. Except for purpose of investigating, town officials shall deal with town employees solely through the elected or appointed official who directly supervises such employees and may not give orders to such employees, either publicly or privately." And so I'll refer you back to the charter. It's Section 3, I believe, hold on, let's see, 3.05, 3.06, Section B, which says, "The town manager shall supervise and direct the administration of all departments, committees, boards, and offices of the town, except those elected by the voters or appointed by the selectman, the moderator, or otherwise provided by this charter." And the reason I bring this to the board's attention, it's always good to bring it to new members' attention, but remind existing members that, that under the new charter, and actually under the old charter, town employees are under the direction of the town manager. And a couple of employees have raised concerns. It's not that they don't want to fulfill requests of the Board of Selectmen. It's just some of these requests are significant requests that could be ours for one project, and it puts them in a bad position as to what work they should be doing, whether they should be fulfilling a request of the Board of Selectmen or doing the work that was assigned to them by the town manager. So it's, it's not that you can't get the information, it's just if there's a significant task, just please go through the town manager so that she can assign it appropriately. And as always, if you have a question from a department head, a town employee, just need a piece of paper for preparation for a meeting, or a simple question, of course you can go to that person. But to assign a significant task to a town employee just isn't appropriate coming from individual board members. Did you have anything?
No, through the chair, I, pardon me, I'm losing my voice, so I'm not going to say too much. But if requests could come through me, I can make sure that they get to the department head and get to the employee. If you can't reach me, certainly go through the Assistant Town Manager, Ed Kuzinovich. Also, always been open to having you go directly to department heads. If you can, just give me a heads up that you've done that. Again, it's just so that we can organize the workload for the employees, and there's no confusion on the part of the employee, what tasks they're supposed to be working on for that day. So that would be appreciated.
So did anyone have any question or comment on that? Moving on to town manager items, we have the Fire Chief update on the AFG Grant Award, and I see, oh, the chief is here. He snuck in on me. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Through the chair, as the board is aware, last December, the department applied for and submitted an assistance to firefighter grant, or an AFG grant, through FEMA. And the board, at that time, approved the authorization of the submission of the grant. And this grant specifically was written for the replacement of the department's self-contained breathing apparatus, better known as the SCBA unit. It was written to replace the 38 SCBAs that we currently have within the department. Many of the units that we currently have in the department are three or four generations old from NFPA complacency, and some of these units are upwards of 20 years old. So I am very pleased to be here this evening to announce that we were recently notified by FEMA that the department was successful and will be awarded the AFG grant. And we will be receiving the total grant amount that was requested of $344,285 to replace these units. $327,285 will be coming from the federal government, and the local share from the town will be 5%, which is a little over $17,000. So it brings me great pleasure to stand here before you tonight to tell you that we were successful in this grant. This is huge. As, as many of you are aware, the SCBA is the most important piece of equipment that a firefighter can wear from a, from a safety perspective. And to ensure that our members are wearing the very best that technology has to offer is not only important to me, but it's important for the leadership of the department, as I know it's also important to the community. So applying for the SCBA when, when we went for this grant was sort of a no-brainer. It was very apparent as to what we were going to apply for. So what this grant will allow the department to replace is 38 SCBA packs, each with a spare bottle, so we will receive a total of 76 bottles. Each one of those SCBA units comes with a new facepiece and a voice amplifier with that facepiece, and that's an upgrade. Some of the supervisors have voice amplifiers on their current packs, but many of the units that we have, the firefighters themselves, do not have the voice amplification. So as soon as you put the facepiece on, it becomes very difficult for anybody around you to hear what is being said. So all of these new units will be equipped with voice amplification. One of the major safety upgrades that is included on these packs is what's known as inline buddy breathing. So it's a device on the SCBA unit that allows an air source, whether it's from another pack, or what's called a rapid intervention pack, which has a larger supply of air up to one hour. It allows you to connect that alternate air source- or what's called a rapid intervention pack, which has a larger supply of air, up to one hour. It allows you to connect that alternate air source to the member's SCBA unit with not actually having to remove the pack or remove the bottle. So it's an inline connection that with the hose, another firefighter can either clip into, or like I said, that one-hour rapid intervention pack can clip in. Currently, none of the units that we have in the department have that safety feature, and that was huge. That was one of the real main goals that we set out with when we were going to replace this equipment. So we're very happy to bring that safety feature into the department. Part of this grant will also allow us to buy two rapid intervention packs. Those are the, those are the packs that, when, when we arrived at any fire, one of the key components is to make sure that we are, we have a group of people, a trained group of people outside, that in the event that something goes wrong inside, it's a specially trained group of firefighters that can go in and effectuate a rescue. And this grant will also allow us to purchase two rapid intervention packs. Like I said, they have those one-hour bottles with all the accessories that they would need for that type of a rescue situation. The grant will also allow us to, to upgrade the department's aging air compressor, which is a little over 20 years old. And the technology of the new packs that we're going to, it's a higher PSI in the bottle, so it'll make our current air compressor that we have obsolete. So the grant will allow us to purchase a new air compressor as well. Like anything that we do in the fire service, it involves a team effort. And I, I would be remiss if I did not give credit to the people who really did the lion's share of the work to make sure that we were successful in this, in this grant award. Within the department, we have a grants writing team that, not only with AFG, but any other grant that comes our way. It goes to a group of people. They research it, they study it, they get the necessary data in order to make sure that we put a narrative together that's, that's really going to be competitive and hopefully successful. The grants team is here this evening, and I want to publicly acknowledge Lieutenant Justin Brigham, firefighter Eric Krepsky, and firefighter Ovi Tiklia. Those three members, again, are on the grants team. They did the lion's share of this work, and they spent countless hours, not only on duty but off duty, calling each other, emailing each other, emailing me, calling me, just so we could kind of bounce the narrative around, bounce the technology around. And they really did a tremendous job in putting this together. And, and much like, like any grant, you're, you're limited to a certain amount of characters, you know, within the grant. So to be able to try to be as, as concise as we could be within that character limit, they really, really did a great job, because this, this grant is largely weighed on the narrative. Data is one thing. From what I'm told, 75% of the weight behind this grant goes to the narrative. So they, they did an outstanding job with that, and I, and I just wanted to publicly thank them for that. To date, AFG has only awarded 463 grants nationwide since April. Seventeen of those grants were here in Massachusetts, and that includes us. And currently, to date, the town of Auburn, we've received the largest dollar amount awarded in Massachusetts and 16th overall highest in the U.S. So this is an extremely competitive grant process. In 2002, when the AFG was implemented, the town of Auburn has submitted 11 AFG applications. This is the first one that we were successful with in 11 years. And outside of public works projects, this is the largest outside grant award, competitive grant award that the town of Auburn has received. So I'm thrilled to be able to bring you this news this evening, and I will certainly entertain any questions if you have them.
Well, I really, I really don't have a question, but as you said when you started, this is huge. And you're right, this is huge, so thank you for that. And thank you for coming in tonight and taking the time to explain the grant process, the significance of it, recognizing your grant writing team. I know that, that the town of Auburn has applied for this grant several times, and it takes the work of a team of grant writers and an understanding of your operation to be successful in this. So to be seven, you know, to be one of 17 in the Commonwealth, where we have 351 communities, and then one of 463 nationwide, that is very impressive. So congratulations, a huge congratulations on that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, as chief, thank you for coming in tonight and explaining this to us. As a past member and longtime member, we've seen a lot of the changes in the SCBA bottles and the equipment coming along with it. And just as you explained of what the equipment is that's going to be on here, is, is going to be more of a confidence builder and just a more, the, the safety factor to the firefighters, give them a little bit more of a comfort level. And I think this is, the chairman noted, it's huge. And good for you. Well done, everybody. This is going to be great for the department, and technology is there, so we go forward. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brotherton?
I don't know what to say, chief. I apologize, but thank you so much for taking care of our department.
You're very welcome.
For all the grants you want, I'll help you to keep our men and women safe. Godspeed to all of you.
Thank you.
I think the board has said everything, so I'm not going to keep you any longer than you have to. But congratulations to the department and yourself for a job well done, and we appreciate everything that you do every day, and just keep working as hard as you can. I know you will, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just think the manager wants to have the final word.
I also want to say, through my squeaky voice, again, I want to thank all of you, the chief and the team. You, you did a great, great job. I know how hard you worked on this, and I know how competitive it is. And we actually, the chief and I got a call from the congressman's office the other day congratulating us. This is a huge accomplishment, and you really should be proud, because I know all of us are. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Through the chair, I just wanted to just point out as well, and again, I mean, I think we all know the, the significance and the importance of the dollar amount, but from, from a department perspective, a capital perspective, this, this replacement of all of this equipment that we were going to purchase was actually on the CIP for next year. So the fact that we were able to receive this grant award essentially eliminates that, that dollar amount of capital for this purchase, so.
Great. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
You can stay there, though, because I believe you're up for the next agenda item. Mrs. Jacobson, which is the Fire Chief requesting to declare surplus property.
Yes. Chief?
Yes. The letter that you have before you is requesting that you declare the department's 2002 Chevy Tahoe as surplus property so we can dispose of it. That vehicle was replaced this past fall, I believe. No, I'm sorry, last summer. The, the vehicle was replaced last summer, and that is the vehicle that's being driven by the fire inspector.
Are there any questions on the request? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we declare the truck as outlined as surplus, as the chief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thanks, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing in your team.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.
The next item is a municipal grant, sustainable materials recovery. And we have Amy Sullivan, who wants to speak to that. Good evening.
Madam Chair, can we ask the chairman to come, and actually, the department heads when they come? Can we ask them to sit at the table so they're not miles away from us? They're part of our team. We want, we want them.
Please come up here and sit down.
So we will, again, be applying for the state grant, Sustainable Materials Recovery. This is, I apologize, I had to abort tonight. New section of the grant this year, they've added a recycling dividends program, which rewards communities that have good recycling programs, and it provides incentives to take additional steps to improve the program. So it's not a reimbursement-based program. It's actually a dividend that's paid, excuse me, based on our number of customers and some of the programs we already have in place, we would be eligible for $2,800. And we have not decided yet what we would use it for, but it will probably go for additional outreach and education on recycling. So we just need approval to apply for the grant, because it's due Wednesday.
Do any members have any questions regarding the grant application?
You don't need a newsletter by then, do you?
No, I just, it's, it's all filled out. I just have to submit it. It's all electronic, so I just have to get approval.
So is there, is there a motion to, to authorize the app, the filing of the application and accept the funds?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope it's just allergies and you're feeling better.
Thank you. I have a few reminders while I have your attention.
Oh, absolutely.
Can I just say a few things?
Absolutely.
I want to remind everyone that plastic bags and styrofoam cannot be recycled in our curbside program, even if they have recycling symbols on them. No plastic bags and no styrofoam in the recycling bins. Also, things that are broken, that are not useful, aren't necessarily recyclable. They're probably trash. So depending on what it is, it's usually, aside from paper and cardboard, we're thinking of containers, not like a broken mop that's made out of plastic. That's usually trash. So I just want to remind, I've seen a lot of these things in the recycle bins. We just want to make sure we're actually doing a good job in keeping the recycling good quality. And we also still have 18 compost bins for sale through the Board of Health and 20 scrap buckets left. So we have sold a few.
Excellent.
Just want to remind everyone that those are available. And we also have one vacancy on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I'm not sure if people realize that, but we could use some help. Okay?
So if anyone's interested in applying for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, you can come into the manager's office and fill out an application. They're also available online, and that is a town manager appointment, so.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks so much for all the great info. And good luck with that grant. You've got a tough act to follow. The next item we have is a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Award. Mr. Coyle, please come up to the table and join us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Julie and Sharon, happy to announce to the town that last year, the DPW through the town, applied for a grant through FEMA, through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, for flood hazard mitigation in the area of 22 Meadowbrook Road. And we were awarded a grant in the amount of $67,500 to construct a detention pond on the package yard golf course up gradient from this flooding area. And the town will be also providing a 20% match, possibly through in-kind services as well. So this is something that was a significant impact to that general area. And there was a lot of work through the, the Assistant Town Engineer, Joanna Paquin, on this project and also the engineering office in general. If we have to answer any questions that you might have.
Congratulations again on your grant.
Thank you.
Mr. Holstrom?
One quick question through the chair. Now, you were saying that the retention point is going to be on the package yard golf course.
Correct.
And it will help Meadowbrook Road.
Correct.
Has there been any problem with Old Farm Road with any of the runoff from Meadowbrook Road downhill?
Based on my experience since I've been here, most of the impact has been on Meadowbrook Road. But certainly during a large enough storm event, it would obviously extend beyond Meadowbrook down gradient as well. So if there was a 100-year storm event, it would also potentially impact the roadway infrastructure. So, so this is a significant benefit to the area. Going back through the files, there's, there's been a history of decades of, of issues with flooding in that general location. So it's definitely a significant benefit. This would also help alleviate some of the issues on the golf course, and I believe on the, the fifth hole, but I refer to it as the Grand Canyon. It's a very eroded area in that location, and that's approximately the location of where this detention pond would be constructed. Thank you.
Anything else? Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can, you may want to hang for a minute for the next item. The Community Innovation Challenge Regional Stormwater Grant.
Through the chair.
Might be.
Yeah, if Bill wants to state, just in case there are any questions on stormwater, but I can take this item. First of all, I want to thank Bill and Joanna for all their work on that grant. Again, another very competitive grant. I had come in with a report to the board, I believe, the last time was probably around the time of town meeting in May, was a grant update. And I should probably get you another one, because it's pretty amazing. If you look at all the grants that the departments have applied for and received, and some of the equipment that we've been able to get without having to use tax levying money. It's really been an excellent track record. So I want to congratulate everybody again here who's worked on that. This next one is a regional grant that we had applied for. The town of Auburn is one of 30 communities, and it was a regional CIC grant, and it's for Phase 3 of our stormwater project, which was mapping and implementation in educational programs related to stormwater. The first time we applied for the grant, I believe there were 13 communities in Central Mass. It was such a success that we ended up expanding that to 30 communities. The lead grant community the first time was Charlton, the second grant was Spencer, and I believe this third grant was Spencer as well. We applied for $200,000. Again, this is for Phase 3, and we were awarded $80,000. The 30 communities have gotten together. They meet on a monthly basis, if not even more frequently. Jeff Mitchell, the Assistant DPW Director and Sewer Superintendent participates for the town of Auburn. And they meet and discuss move forward on the grant. They've hired consultants with the money. They have a great mapping system in place for some regional analysis. Because the grant was reduced from 200 down to 80, all of the communities would have to put in $4,000 to participate in the scope of services as it was outlined in the grant application. The communities that were at the table got together, and for the majority, the town managers and sewer superintendents believe that it's a worthwhile grant. It's most likely the last phase of the project. The $4,000 we do have available in our stormwater account, it specifically come out of the mapping and drainage account, and it is an eligible expenditure. It's something that we feel should be carried forward. Jeff Mitchell, the sewer superintendent, believes it's definitely worth participating in. The, under state law, in order to enter into an interminable agreement such as this, we would need Board of Selectmen approval. So we're here tonight to ask you to vote to authorize us to enter into that agreement. I believe the chair can actually sign for the board, but we would need to have a vote. If I, when I get back to the office, I'll check the grant. If it needs all of the signatures of the board, and if the board goes forward and supports this, then we'll make sure that we put it out this week, along with the payment when you commit to sign the warrant articles. We don't need to get this to them until June 30th. We're just trying to be proactive in the tunnel. So that's, that would be my request, that the board authorize the chair to enter into an interminable agreement with the other participating communities at a rate of $4,000.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We're under discussion?
Thank you, yes. I just want to add one thing. If all 30 communities do not participate, the coalition that's performed will be looking to bring in another community to fill in. So the rate would still be $4,000. I think the only time we might see that go up slightly is if we couldn't get any replacement communities. But it's a great project, so we're not anticipating a problem at this point.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else? There are no other town manager items? There are no tabled items? Excuse me, I think it's contagious. Board of Selectmen member items. Mr. Simonean had an item. He's not here, so we'll hold that. Mr. Holstrom, did you want to hold the second item?
Yes, I'd like to table that till I have a chance to.
Okay. And so.
Talk to him directly.
The third item is proposal to develop a policy on how board requests information from the town administration, and that's you, Mr. Holstrom.
Yeah, and I think you put it plain and simple. Through the charter, the new charter as amended from 2009, as well as the old charter, there is a chain of command, and we should be able to funnel requests through the town manager to her departments, which are accountable to her, and we can kind of get a little bit more organization to request for information.
And is that for, for individual board members? The board through a vote, or both?
I think what we have right here now, the board, the board requests information, so.
Okay.
It's the board right now, but I think that would entail individual members as well.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this?
Are we referring this to the Policy Committee, Mr. Holstrom, or is there actually a proposal?
No, I would believe we would go to the, refer to the Subcommittee, and let them come back with a proposal to us, and then we can discuss it at that point.
I do think there should be an individual as well as a board policy.
Okay.
I think that's best.
I agree.
Separate board and individual?
Yes.
Okay, so the Subcommittee will work on. Okay, so the Subcommittee will work on getting that policy back to the full board review, and that we bring it back, and under our own policy, we would vote at the next meeting. So is there anything else under Board of Selectmen member items?
No, I have one quick question. I had volunteered to work on the license applications updates.
Yep.
Do we have any license applications due for June, or is this going to be towards the end of the year? Just to get a start on it.
Through the chair, the majority of them will be at the end of the year.
Okay.
There's one that was due in April, and that's already now passed, and the rest will probably be at the end of the year.
Okay, so we do have the some to work on that, and, great, thank you.
Are there any other member items?
I just have a couple requests.
Okay.
Because we had a couple grant applications, and as a new member, I had nothing in my packet to tell me what these grants were about, so I would appreciate it if we do have grants, that I get a brief description, so that I know what's going on with the grants. That would be appreciated. Also, when we have appointments, I would like the complete list, I don't just want who's coming tonight, I would like the complete list of applications in my hand, so that I can go through them and formulate whatever questions I may have, that would just be a request. Also knowing who's up, who the incumbents are, whether they're seeking reappointment, that would be helpful before the meeting. Obviously, if somebody tells you today that they're not, obviously, I understand that that can't happen, but those would be in the form of requests, that we have that. And my last request is, when the agenda is complete or finalized on Thursday, if I can get a, or if select board members can get a copy on Thursday, that way if I have any questions, I can ask, especially, we're getting it on Thursday, Friday's a short day, we may not be able to get an answer by Monday, so that's.
So the agenda.
It's not done until Friday.
That's available on Thursday, is the draft agenda for the posting.
Right.
I mean, it's, so it's.
But if I'm correct, you finalize that Thursday morning, so that is the agenda that we would put something on, members might say to the chair or the manager that we want an item on, so it's going to be posted as our agenda.
Yes, that's what's posted, and then Sharon works on getting the information for the remainder of the agenda.
Through the chair, the agenda is posted Thursday afternoons. Generally, the chair, myself, and Sharon sit down Thursday mornings and go over that agenda. Member items are usually suggested and due on Wednesday, so we can get it on to the draft agenda for discussion on Thursday. Then the actual board packets aren't prepared until Friday, because the posting is late in the day Thursday, sometimes right up until the deadline, because we're waiting for items to come in, so Friday mornings, Sharon spends the morning getting all the packages together, so if it is done earlier, we would get it to you, but it is available online and posted on Thursday, so we can send that out to the board.
I did look online, it wasn't available even on Friday, so I'm just asking, when it's finalized, that I get the agenda, I'm not asking for a packet, I'm just asking for the agenda, so that I know and I can prepare myself for a meeting on Monday, okay?
So we'll email that out. Is there anything else? No other member items, we have the, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we have the minutes of October 15, 2013, are there any corrections or omissions? The chair will accept them as written, and I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, we are adjourned.
Thank you, good night.